Let us resume our meeting. We would like to welcome the Director of Administration, the Commissioner for INC, the Director of Audit, the CE Permanent Secretary from the CE's office and also Secretary General from the LC Secretariat. Each member will have up to four minutes for questions and answers included. So please press the request to speak button, Mr. Gary Fan. I'd like to follow up on CEO 001. They said that during the period 2018-19, the CE made some visits to overseas visit. And then when she visited Beijing, she met with young people in internship program in Beijing. And the budget was $90,000. And then last June, she visited Brussels and spent $570,000. So let you know whether there are guidelines for visits of CE to overseas and to the mainland, or whether there is any cap on money to be spent so that it will be value for money. Two questions. Mrs. Ting. Regarding duty visits by the CE, the expenses will depend on the destination and also activities involved and also the number of accompanying officers and also the dates of the visits concerned. And in making these arrangements, we will of course ensure that it is value for money. And in the process, if there are relevant guidelines, we will comply with them. So there are guidelines. For instance, the number of accompanying officers, they will be entitled to an allowance, a daily allowance. And we have fixed rates of allowance depending on the destination of visits and such will have to be complied to follow CEO 02. Now according to the reply, there were five visits related to the GBA. Now ODP of GBA made it very clear that we have to expedite the establishment of international cities, big data centers, and also innovation technology hub, etc. I'd like to know whether it is really against the objective because the intention is to take cities out to go global. Why shouldn't overseas visits be made? Why should it be to the mainland? Shouldn't the CE be accompanied by officials and go overseas for visits? And then mainland officials should pay for their own visits? It will be more cost effective and then will be able to comply with what is in the ODP of GBA? That is, instead of visiting mainland cities, they should go overseas? Mrs. Ting, when it comes to GBA, the Great Belt Area Development, we have to liaise with leaders of those mainland cities. And there is also the need to go global. Just now, the CE is visiting Japan in these few days. And she is promoting GBA to Japan in this visit. So whether it be visits to the mainland or to other countries, they are just as important. Mr. Ma Fengkua, CSO 042 relates to the Government Record Service. Now, I want to commend them for purchasing archival records relating to Hong Kong from other places. Last year, $300,000 were given, but that was not sufficient. I think it is good to procure such records so that to facilitate researchers in this area. This year, the budget is only $400,000. Last year, you spent half a million. Can more be provided just in case there are new archival records? So we can procure them in time. And last, it is good that you have started a trial run to open up the office on Saturday mornings for the public. I'd like to know the expenses involved and if the opening arrangement of the search room is well received, would you extend the opening hours so the people who can't visit the search room during office hours can have the opportunity to access the records there?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Ma, for your question. As you said, the Government Record Service has been working very hard to procure archival records relating to Hong Kong from other places to facilitate their use by researchers in Hong Kong. As said by Mr. Ma, I take last checks example, the budget was $300,000. But at the end of the day, when there are worthy records to procure, we will be able to do so through internal reclamation of resources. So for upcoming year, we've reserved $0.4 million. And if there are more archival records appropriate for procurement, we will make available resources by means of internal redeployment. Mr. Ma talked about the arrangement of our search room on Saturday mornings. It's true that we're going to do so, or we're doing that so that more members of the public can search our records. Mr. Ma asked about the additional expenses involved. We are going to do so by internal redeployment of resources. If it is found that our cost has risen, and we will secure additional resources to do so. And Mr. Ma also asked if after six months, the trial scheme is found to be well received, can we extend the arrangement? We will consider that. We'll first finish the trial scheme planned for six months and then follow up afterwards. I'd like to ask a follow-up question. It is said that if there is the need, they can continue these measures by means of internal redeployment of resources. I'd like to know whether you have lots of extra resources. We talk about the $2 million. Can you really be able to make ends meet by means of redeployment of resources?
Well, we can redeploy resources, not just from the Government Record Service. Since we're under the government, the administration wing, resources can be redeployed within the wing. And whether we have a very lenient budget, in fact, it's not the case because we do have some idea in mind as to the amount of archival records we want to purchase. Mr. Ray Chen, my question is CSO 005 involving money for the Innovation and Technology Policy Innovation and Coordination Office, PICO. We asked what mechanism is there for Legco to monitor the work of PICO? Can we do so at a special meeting of the House Committee or at panel meetings? I failed to see anything like this. And we rely on annual special FCEs to do this. So it's difficult for the council to monitor the work of PICO. In 1819, there were 17 projects received and nine were on GBA or related to the Belt and Road Initiative. And some of the rather strange university, Hang Seng University applying for studying of fake records. Now, you said received. I'd like to know whether they have been approved or not. Do you have to wait until the next financial year? For projects already approved, many of them were related to the GBA or BNI. Is it because these applicants felt that such projects stood a higher chance of success? Or is it because people in the community like to research into these two areas? And some of them are not from post-secondary institutions. I'd like to know whether you have any restrictions. For instance, if I have set up a think tank, can I apply for funding as well? And for the study on fake news, I'd like to know what is it in reality? And can we share the fruits of the study? If so, how can we do so? Regarding the Public Policy Subsidy Funding Scheme, well, the Board, the Redding Board comprises many academics. So it is not just for PICO to decide. In 1819, as you can see in our annex 2, out of the 92 projects approved were related to GBA. In our Public Policy Research Program, coincidentally, three approved were related to GBA. So you can see that there are more institutes interested in GBA. So three approved were related to GBA. But the scope is in fact very wide. Some is about facilitation of flow of goods and passengers and some were related to construction materials. For those without asterisks, they were those received but not approved by the Board. So those of asterisks are those already approved. Item 8 by Hang Seng University, well, it was on public policy. It was accepted but not approved, CSO 001. Now former CEs after their term can enjoy support as former CEs. So we would like to know the expenses for Chongqiu Hua, Dong, Chongqiu Hua, Donald Zhang, and Lo Chanying on protocol matters. In 2014 to 2017, there were about 150 protocol visits, so on and so forth. But since the term of CY Leng rose substantially in 2018-19, the total number was 1,100. I think that had nothing to do with Donald Zhang. I'd like to know how come we do not have a breakdown of the number of protocol-related functions and promotional functions attended by CH Tong and CY Leng? I'd like to know the reasons for that. Acting Director of Administration. In part three of the reply, we set out the relevant information. When information was provided, it was general information. If the member would like to know the breakdown that is available, in 2017-18, among 476, 200 were made by Mr. CY CH Tong, 142 by Donald Zhang, and 134 by CY Leng. And in 2018-19, among 1,277, CH Tong, 536, 193, and CY Leng, 548 respectively. Thank you.
That question is about LC 002, Legislative Council. It said that there will be some expenditure to be incurred under recurrent expenditure, such as revamping of our website, the relevant hardware and software and database. The cost is about $10,000, $10 million. So I'd like to know, get more detail from the Secretary General. Many reporters said that the Legco's WiFi service is poor. You're going to improve the WiFi system by spending 4.8 million dollars? Some officials have asked for the same. Is this enough? LC 034, it said that you are going to align the arrangement with the government. Our keenness of our contractors will be given more labor protection. Are you going to, are we going to do the same as the government? And that is 6% of contract activities if they work for 12 months and then they can get a 1.5, the normal rate way if they work when there's a telephone number eight signal? Are we, our contractor's staff going to get the same treatment? Also, I said that we are going to give the, our contractors or key workers pay for meal time. And you said you wait until the government has done the same. On the revamp for our website, our budget would cover the hardware, the servers. Some of the equipment will be replaced. And of course, the development of software. Hardware and software will each account for half of the total budget. On the question of Legco WiFi, we note our, the usage is very much depending on the number of people, Legislative Council members and reporters included. That depends on the number of people present. We would like to increase the capacity when there is a greater, it's a bigger demand. I hope members will allow, will understand that if we increase the capacity all the time, the cost is going to be exorbitant. So we'd like to get the flexibility to increase the capacity when needed. The first question is about the conditions of employment of keyness under, work under our contractors. The Legco Commission will follow the arrangements announced by the government, including the end of contract activities, underscoring the system for tenders. The relevant information is contained in the reply given. As for whether the meal time is is part of the paid hours. Some members have big representations and should express their concerns to the Legislative Council Commission. Having weighed all the factors, the Commission's decision is that at the moment, we would follow the improvements announced by the government in respect of outsourced contract workers. And in the future, we'll follow the further improvements announced by the government. CSO 001, I heard from the officials that you can have breakdowns for the three former CEs, 536, 93, and 548 respectively for the three former CEs. I think we should have breakdowns so that we can tell the trend. I'm concerned about the support service provided to former CEs. In the past five years, the increase has been very big. From 5.59 to 10.18, 1.81 million dollars. Some media has said that it's due to due to one of the former CE's activities, i.e. CY Leng. So you need to tell us the number of activities. But the reply says that you don't have breakdown figures for individual CEs, former CEs. But you have breakdown figures for visits, etc., for former CEs. But why not for this item of expenditure? You should, please, give us a reply in writing. This would facilitate understanding. How do you arrive at this figure of 10.81 million dollars? That's the first question. And in 2005, when the application came before the FCE for providing support service to former CEs, it said that the expenditure would go up by 2.2 million dollars a year. Now 10 years have passed. Even if we take into account inflation, the increase should not be so big. Now it's more than 10 million. How or whether you're going to cut unnecessary expenditure in the future? There are a number of questions on the expenditure incurred by the office of former CEs. We have set out in the reply the annual expenditure. In some years, there are particularly high increases. We've explained that for 2017, 2018, the expenditure was 9.11 million dollars. Compared with 2016 and 2017, 6 million, 6.43 million. There's an increase of 41%. Because in 2018, we have another former CE who moved into the office and we have to provide additional support. So the increase was mainly due to the inclusion of the third, of a third former CE. And how do we come up with this 10.81 million dollars for 2018, 2019? And why is it higher than the previous year of 9.11 million dollars? Well, in 2018, 2019, the third former CE also used the services. And in 2018, 2019, the expenditure refactored the full year effect because in 2017, 2018, he only used the service for nine months. And the other question is, why in 2005, we estimated that the increase in expenditure every year would be 2.2 million dollars? And why is the increase higher than that? It's because the office has to support three former CEs. And the situation is now different from what we faced back then. To follow up on this question, can you tell us some ballpark estimate as regards how, that for each former CE, we're going to spend 2.5 to 3 million dollars for each of them annually? Is that correct? All the expenditure on providing support service to former CEs, we work according to the rules. There are three people who need to support a former CE. There's a senior assistant, one assistant curricle officer, and chauffeur. So for each former CE, there will be three people that are providing direct support service. And the expenditure for hiring these three people will be 1.4 to 1.6 million dollars a year. And there is other office departmental expenditure of the office and the expenditure on building maintenance, which cannot be assigned to individual former CEs. For direct support service to a former CE, on average, we have to spend 1.4 to 1.6 million dollars. So it's about pay of the supporting staff. You mentioned a senior assistant. Would that include the Facebook administrator? You know what I'm talking about? Why I'm asked this? Because CY Leng expressed certain comments in his Facebook account, which are really causing some people to wonder why he's doing this. The special assistant and the assistant curricle officer would be given assignments to help the former CE. So that includes, possibly includes managing his Facebook account. I form force an answer from you. Let me return to a formal question. Mrs. Carrie Lam should have an information coordinator to help her. But so far, there's no one taking up that post. Some time ago, Carrie Lam organized a press conference covering the three major topics, including the distribution of traffic among the cross-habitantals and other matters. The first information coordinator was an experienced journalist. He or she left very soon. And now, Mrs. Carrie Lam is frightened by the whole process and she will not employ another information coordinator. Is it the case that the CE thinks that there's no need for her to have an IC? Well, the post of the information coordinator is now left vacant. We'll continue to find a suitable candidate. Yes, that's in the written reply. But what about my oral questions? Is it that no one is willing to apply for the post? Or is it that the CE is alarmed by the previous experience and she no longer wants to hire one? Or she thinks that she can do it herself? There's no need to have an information coordinator to do it for her? We need to find a suitable candidate for this post. And this is an ongoing task. Mr. Jeremy Tam, four minutes. I want to ask some questions about CSO 001, former CE's office. Would the staff hired to support former CEs include administrator of his Facebook account? Would the work involve in busy CY Leng's Facebook account in offering comments on the Apple Daily to be included? Well, it's within the budget. If there's the need to buy newspapers or if they want to get some information, of course, the expenditure will also be covered. Did he actually do that? Well, I do not really monitor each and every expenditure item of former CEs. You know that Mr. CY Leng is fond of taking pictures of the Apple Daily and upload the same to his Facebook account. And he do this to try to affect a commercial, the business? Would that go against the principle of incurring public expenditure of this nature? Would that go against the principle of incurring public expenditure of this nature?
I have a question on L C O O one, uh the. Vehicle for the car for uh the president. Now he is using an Lexus five hundred, I like executive. L S five hundred executive, I'd like to know who picked that model for him? Or did he uh choose it himself? Well, uh the uh um. Administrative staff chose that on behalf of the president according to guidelines from the administration. The president was not involved. So the secretariat picked, I'd like to know whether the secretariat usually chooses the car for him. Do you have to consult him after you have suggested a choice? Of course, the final decision is not for the secretariat to make. Uh we put it to the electrical commission for a final decision. As for the make and model. We will take reference from guidelines from the administration. Uh the make and models are being used by government officials in making a decision, thank you. Uh which government official has got Lexus L S five hundred executive as his vehicle? Which government official? As far as we understand, uh the C S four A, uh the uh. Uh D uh the S J as well as uh the um F S. Similar model or the same? I believe similar, but because they were purchased at different times, there might be some difference, I cannot be sure. But they were made, the decision was made based on guidelines from the administration for purchase of vehicles. How come you haven't considered using electric vehicles? Because we have electric vehicle charging stations in electrical. Why didn't you go for an electric car for the sake of the environment? We've considered hybrid vehicles. But hybrid vehicles have such a power with such horsepower. Oh, was it, is he always in a rush? Why does he need a vehicle with such a horsepower? We have to take reference from a guidelines made for. Government officials of a senior rank, of a similar rank. So concerning uh the prices of petrol vehicle and hybrid vehicle and electrical vehicle. Uh was also our consideration. Mister Charles Mock, C S O O six four. That is the work of Pico. In fact, I do support the work of the Innovation Commission. Uh uh. And there was proposal to um. Remove red tapes and to encourage sharing of economy, shared economies and so forth. I hear in the reply, there are detailed examples of innovation and technology. But for sharing economy, well, the C in his policy address mentioned. Uh sharing economy, he she talked about studies in sharing economy. But if you look at policies of the government, I take the guest house ordinance. And also in raising the penalty for um. Uh operating without uh. Operating a commercial vehicle with passenger service without a license. I think they are not really in compliance with development in sharing economy. The reply says that Pico has studied the regulatory regimes for certain sharing economy activities in other cities. And the impact of the regime on these cities. And the research information has been passed on to the relevant B or D's for reference in policy information. I'd like to know whether you have got examples of the, you have got studies of the two examples I quoted. For B and D's. Reference. Is there anything you can do? To meet our expectations for Pico? And you have to act faster because Pico has been established for almost one and a half years. We've been discussing with the industry. The question, the biggest issue is not how much the government spends in these areas. Uh but um uncertainty is related to our law and legislation. So don't be so passive as to just pass the information to relevant bureaus and departments for their consideration. If the C had told me that that would how Pico would operate, well, we uh. Would say we had a higher expectations. For instance, you should force departments to remove red tapes and liberalize the requirements. Thank you. Yes. Uh reviewing a dated legislation is an important work of the of Pico. In review, we have to collect information from different industries and the views of stakeholders. So we have taken on board the views by legislators. In twenty seventeen, Mister Mock, you sponsored a motion debate and we have read all the comments by members. And we also discuss stakeholders. And for some of the legislation, Pico has taken the lead to review them. For instance, uh we talked about. Autopiloting. And I think this is an important matter for us and we have taken the initiative to study this issue. And we have the cooperation of S T H to do the study with us. And you mentioned guest house ordinance. And also um. Uh home for homestay or Airbnb and licensing of a. Guest house. We have an amendment bill presented to the council for its scrutiny. So we can only take stock of of overseas practices for. The departments and bureaus to consider, and we also raise members' concerns. I think in the bill, there is no ruling out the possibility of a licensing regime for. Uh homestay. But we cannot impose our findings or recommendations on bureaus and departments. F for evidence-based study, we work together with policy bureaus. I don't want to uh continue this debate on a particular project. When it comes to policy with studies and also a bill being presented to council. Well, the regulation is so tight that there is no turning back. The relevant operators cannot operate at all. So I have no intention to debate with you here, but I hope you can adopt a more proactive approach. In discussing with these bureaus and departments so that the regulation so will not be too tight. Mister Arnold King, I'd like to follow up on my previous question. Now, if you tell us that because a third former C E has joined. Uh the rank, the overall spending is nine point one one million dollars. Now in twenty oh five, when Seh Tong resigned because of aiding a leg, the. Spending was two point two billion million dollars. And after twenty sixteen seventeen, Mister Donald Zhang was jailed for a while. So even if we take into account. Uh the um fact that Mister Seh Tong and C Y L O N G shared. The um former C E office. Unless you're saying that you have to support Mister Donald Zhang when imprisoned. Or you have to send um uh. Officers to act as bodyguard. So can you supplement on this? And Mister Jeremy Tam asked about the vehicle procured for the president of this council. I'd like to know whether they have considered buying a hybrid vehicle and why it was not bought in the end. The question. Uh was. Uh the spending for former C E's office. Uh the spending was nine point one one million dollars and the question was, how come it was so high? It was because in twenty seventeen eighteen, we had a third former C E. Whenever we have another new former C E joining the office. Well, they each have to serve by a team of three. What about, how about when the one of the former C E's were jailed? So the team of three had nothing to do. Now, for the years mentioned here. All the teams of former C E's were working in the former C E's office, so we had to pay for them. Well, this is ridiculous. I'm not saying that Mister Donald Zhang wasn't entitled to the to such a. Uh service because he was, he is a former C E, but then when he was jailed, his team had nothing to do. And C Y L O N G and other former C E claimed, claims that he is working there every day. But he is also the deputy chairman of I C C P's, I P P C, C P P C C. Then, as the deputy chairman of C P P C C, I think he should carry out his work in another position. And I'm not convinced by this arrangement. I don't know whether the administration wing has got anything to add. And what about the electrical secretary on the president's vehicle? Well, F C of Legal approved support for former C E. Uh for them to carry out promotional and protocol-related functions. So the arrangements for pharmacy office were done, have been done according to approval by F C. Mister Chen. When we considered different uh. Types of vehicles, we were considering cost effectiveness and petrol vehicles. Are relatively cheaper to maintain or to operate. Mister D. Ju. Legal, L C O one four. Employment of cleaning workers and according to the reply. Uh the wage for the cleaners is nine thousand two hundred dollars per month. And they normally work eight hours per day and they entitled to one paid rest day for every period of seven days. I'd like to know what is their hourly rate. Uh is quite close to the minimum, statutory minimum wage, which will be seven thirty seven dollars fifty cents very soon. So can we be more generous? Can we accept the proposal by Oxfam? And the rate should be fifty four seventy according to Oxfam. And then another question, C S O. Zero two five. Uh it is said here that. There is no. Breakdown of expenditure for individual former C E's. We're told that when Donald Zhang was serving his sentence, his office was still active. And I fail to understand why you cannot give us a breakdown of expenditure. And paragraph one of the reply says that in November twenty oh five, F C of this council. Approved the arrangements proposed for former C E's. So in the case of Donald Zhang, he was convicted for um misconduct in public office. So should we give him the same provisions as approved in twenty oh five? Isn't it possible to take back such arrangements for him?
Secretary General, please refer to L C O three four for detailed explanation. So that you can know that the monthly, the comparison of monthly wages of cleaning of cleaners. Nineteen nine thousand two hundred for twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen will be subject to further adjustment. In our tender document, we stipulate that the winner, the winning contractor must provide. The relevant wage, a median wage rate as published by the Census and Statistics Department. According to, there is a time lag involved here. So the rate there mentioned there will be subject to further adjustment. What about a living wage of at the rate of fifty four dollars fifty cents? The contract is awarded through a tendering arrangement. We cannot stipulate the wage to be paid. Can you sell a floor, the limit, a limit of living wage? In accordance with the principle discussed at the Electrical Commission, we will. Follow the tenderings, guidelines. Um issued to government departments. Uh in in such guidelines, there's no stipulation of particular wage rate. The question is about. The lack of breakdown expenditure figure for individual former C E's. As I've said, each former C E is assisted by a team. I mentioned that for each team, the expenditure will range from one point four to one point six million dollars per annum. But there are the general expenses for the office and also maintenance expenditure of the office. Which cannot be really attributed to individual former C E's. So for direct support staff. Uh the expenditure on direct support staff, we have provided the breakdown figure. And the member also asked about the approved support service in. In two thousand and five. In accordance with the approval, we 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 provide a support service to former C E's. To to involve in protocol and promotion-related activities. If the former C E indicates, if a former C E indicates that they will no longer be involved in such activities. Then we would redeploy the resources accordingly. I want to follow up on the replied C S O O O one. Uh during the imprisonment of Mister Donald Zhang, but the team was uh still. In operation and paid. He was convicted uh as the C E. So the only reasonable arrangement would be deprive him of the perks pertaining to a former C E. He shouldn't get all the support. Well, it's my turn to ask questions, you should shut up. Julius Ho. It's not a question of fairness. The public would like to know how much is spent, we're not talking about big sums. It's just a few million dollars, but this money uh not spent wisely. He was convicted as. The C E. And you asked him to do the promotion. His offense was related to his public office. C S O O five one, PIKO, is a reply given to Mr. Pun Shu Ping's question. It was, the PIKO was established in twenty fourteen, the first of April twenty fourteen. The revised expenditure would increase by forty three percent to thirty eight point six million dollars. If we compare the expenditure, an increase of three point six percent in Singa. So the PIKO would look at the budget and disperse the funding grants? Or would the government come up with a priority list? How much money and decide how much money will be spent by PIKO on funding? For example, the study into building a market for Tongchung and Tsinghua. And if the money is for research and funding is sufficient, can you get more from the government? Anything to supplement from the Director of Administration? Back in two thousand and five, the F C gave the approval to and the purpose of the support service provided by the office is to support the former C E is in carrying out promotional and protocol-related duties. Mrs. Petifong. The biggest part of our expenditure is on remuneration and manpower costs. We have also earmarked thirty million dollars while two public policy research projects. We have a pool so far, twenty eight from, twenty four point eight million dollars. More funding programs will be funded. And if thirty million is not enough, we can top it up. If there are innovative study programs, we can get more. In the first year of our establishment, we, we did not spend the entire budget of thirty million dollars. Mr. Chan Chi Chin, it's L C O four O. Some members are concerned about the so-called occupational safety and health faced by our let's call security officers. The concern is about the security officers of electrical injured in protests and assemblies and other public activities. Public activities. Last year, there are six staff members who were injured. Have you, can you provide breakdowns in respect of the cases involving conflicts with the public and electrical members? Of course, a conflict with electrical members can be avoided. In the past, when the order when order here is not under control, the meeting will be suspended. But now you ask for the removal of the member concern. It's that the insurance coverage will take care of that. But we are concerned about injury. And I'm also concerned about occupational safety and health, not related to any conflict. But injuries sustained during their normal discharge of duties. Do we have figures for that? There are people who are concerned with the counter outside the electrical building, which was set up after the occupation movement. Is this workstation going to be permanent? Because the conditions there are not really good. During the winter, it's really cold. And then during the summer season, it may be affected by a rain or storm. Well, I'm not a member of Electrical Commission, but I would like to use this opportunity to ask for some improvement to be made. Can you build a shed or supply some screen for the staff working at that station? Thank you for your concern. I think you are talking about public entrance number two, under the covered portion of the building where we have X, X-rays machines for security checks. Yes, it's rather windy in winter. We provide winter clothing for, for our staff. And if necessary, we can also provide a small heater. As regards whether we can have some more permanent fixtures there, we'll work with the Buildings Department because it's at a road junction. Why do we have to put those things outside the public entrance? That is a public entrance number two because the reception area inside does not have enough space for security equipment. What about the number of cases of injuries sustained? Apart from cases involving conflicts with the public? Well, we can, of course, re-categorize each, every injury case, but we don't have such breakdown kept regularly. Mr. Jeremy Tam, L C O O one, the vehicles for this council is a Lexus LS five hundred for the president. You mentioned the need to have certain horsepower. Four hundred and twenty-one H P, three thousand five hundred C C of capacity. It's a core five O O, but it's not five thousand C C. For the same series, we have LS three fifty, same cylinder capacity. But of course, it will save more than a hundred thousand dollars in the cost purchase. But of course, the vehicle used by the president should be, should commensurate with his status. But I don't think we should always tick the box where you have the lowest C C figure. Are you, there's a, the question, why we don't use electric vehicles? You did not give us a full reply. You may say that if we want to give a big, a room of the compartment, there's no E V available in the market. But, but the same spacious compartment can be found in hybrid vehicles. The last one was G S four five O H. So for, for L C one, instead of hybrid vehicle, we're going to buy, buy a petrol vehicle. And also we used to have an S Toyota estimate hybrid. And now it's going to be one, two, another way, petrol vehicle. And L C three is a Toyota L Grand. So all three new vehicles will be non-hybrid vehicles. I think this will give people some impression. I'll ask the same question of the government on the use of hybrid vehicles and electric vehicles. When we want to promote the use of E Vs, the government should take the lead. And the Electrical should also lead by example. So that's why I asked this question because all the three vehicles we use for our senior colleagues will not be E V cars or hybrid vehicles. I think in the future, you give priorities to E Vs, e- electric vehicles because we do have the charging facilities. When charging facilities are available in our Electrical Complex, I hope you will give first priority to electric vehicles. And failing that, you will go for hybrid vehicles. And only when hybrid vehicles are also not available, we go for the normal vehicles.
SG, any supplement? Thank you, Mr. Tam, for your advice. We always report to the Electrical Commission before making a purchase. Mr. Tam is a member of the Electrical Commission. So you, next time when we purchase vehicles, we will consult the Commission duly. Yes, I, I just recently joined the Commission. And, and I don't know why we, we need a very fast vehicle because I think LS three fifty and LS five hundred are just the same. Unless the chief, I mean, the president intends to speed. Miss Claudia Mo, C E O O O two. And this is about spending by the C E in making duty visits. Those are not too expensive, but it's strange that in some cases, he, she was given sponsorship in transport and accommodation. What kind of sponsorship are we talking about? Is any need for the C E to declare? Because I think she's been given some advantage. And then in last September, she went to Guangzhou of a team of four to attend the opening ceremony of X L L. She did not receive any sponsorship and how come the expenses was zero? And last October, that is one month after, she went to Zhuhai to attend the opening ceremony, the Hong Kong Zhuhai Macau Bridge. And accommodation and local transportation. Now she was accompanied by two accommodation and local transportation for the food delegation was sponsored. I thought then the spending should be zero. But then the expenses here was one thousand five hundred forty-nine point seventy-four. This is so baffling. Can you please explain? Mrs. Ting.
Regarding expenses incurred by the C E visits, the expenses and whether there is any sponsorship will depend on the host and whether the inviting city provided the sponsorship and they've been enlisted in the table. Yes, I'd like to know who provided the sponsorship? How come in late last year, she went to Beijing to do her annual work report and then there was sponsorship? Who provided the sponsorship? That was strange.
Now, in between ten, the eighth and tenth of April twenty eighteen, she went to Hainan to attend the Ba- Boao Forum for Asia Annual Conference twenty eighteen. And sponsorship was provided by the host. And when she went to Beijing to give her work report, was she sponsored in accommodation and transportation? Now, if it is for making annual work report, then it would be provided by the central government. So she's not required to make any decoration because she is not covered by Pobo? Well, we have an annex to list out everything on a quarterly basis. Information in relation to the C E's visits will be uploaded to the website of the C E's office. All right, what about to officiate the opening ceremony of X L L? Well, on the twenty second of September twenty eighteen, she attended, she hosted the opening ceremony for the Hong Kong section of the Hong Kong Zhuhai, Hong Kong Express Rail Link. Well, she started from Hong Kong. She arrived at Guangzhou and returned on the same day. So no expenses were incurred. What about, I guess, oh, she wrote on the X L L. I see. Mr. Lam Chuk Ting, four minutes. I'd like to ask a question. I C A C. I C A C O O nine. We have seen a major problem in our construction activities. I forged documents and missing documents and also fabrication of records, so and so forth. I think this has undermined public confidence in our capital works projects. So my question is for the I C A C. Given the very worrying trend in terms of gathering of intelligence and prevention of bribery and corruption, I'd like to know what resources are available to the I C A C? And will you increase manpower to work on this? Commissioner?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lam, for your question. The Corruption Prevention Office of I C A C has always been providing advice and services to the construction sector in the prevention of corruption and bribery. In the new fiscal year, we've added positions. There are two additional posts. Their duties in the main are to help the government and public bodies and also the construction sector and the engineering sector to enhance their awareness against corruption and in corruption prevention measures. The Operations Department will step up our work in this regard, whether it be gathering of evidence and enforcement and prosecution. Thank you. The Corruption Prevention Department has got their guidelines for pre-corruption prevention. But people might not have adhered to the guidelines. And in the light of the latest situation, the guidelines may have to be reviewed or updated. So my question for Mr. Pai or his team is because of the very serious scandals involving the M T R C L, how are you going to update your guidelines to prevent corruption? So the government officials and members of public bodies will be aware of the risk so that there will be no collusion or acceptance of advantages? Commissioner? The Corruption Prevention Department has been doing this all along. Regarding the M T R C L incident, because a commission of inquiry is working on it, we will not comment. But then in other cases, we have seen some incidents. We have provided guide on corruption prevention. But maybe in, in the laboratory or at the construction sites, some staff members have not adhered to the guide entirely. And I think monitoring staff should do their part and really ensure that the guide is being followed. Mr. Yu Si Wang, my question relates to C S O O seven. That is about PIKO. PIKO has done Uh Pickle has done a lot of studies. I'd like to know whether Pickle has got any uh criteria in providing assistance? Because there may be duplication of efforts with other departments. And uh another question, uh my question is about um review of legislation that may be in the way of innovation and economic development. So I'd like to know whether you adopt a proactive approach or or a passive approach? Uh for uh first stop and one-stop consultant services, we have in uploaded the uh criteria onto our website. Now, uh the project must have uh rather general, must bring a rather general interest to society. Whether it, and there must be general interest to be brought to the community and there will be no major social constraints and the recurring expenditure has to be borne by the project proponent. Now, if these are satisfied, then uh the Pickle can provide first stop and one-stop consultancy service. We will line up with relevant departments to offer support. And we have provided examples in the uh reply. As for reviewing outdated outdated legislation, now if uh chambers of commerce and business associations of the view that some of our legislation has uh stifled further development, well, we will uh uh urge bureaus to start the review if it only involves one single bureau. But if more than one bureau is involved, then Pickle will uh carry out some studies first and we will take into account overseas experience and practices. And we will make recommendations to the relevant bureau for um review and improvement. When we review the current legislation, it does not mean that we always have to amend it. It may be because of the interpretation of the relevant legislation by bureaus and departments is too narrow. If they can relax their um implementation, perhaps that will do. It can be by means of amendment of codes or guidelines. So you've both taken a proactive and passive approaches. Now, I think our embarrassment is more proactive in investigation. So I'd like to know what the Pickle is um more um whether Pickle's role is uh more on the proactive side or the passive side? Well, I think it depends. Relevant observations and recommendations would be submitted to the CE for her consideration. If the CE agrees with us, then she may instruct the relevant bureau to carry out the amendments. But in fact, we are partners with bureaus, so it may not be good if we always turn to the CE for directions. So after various rounds of exchange with bureaus and if the recommendations are accepted, then that is the most desirable approach. Thank you, government officials, for attending this part of the session. And tomorrow, we will start at two PM. Thank you.